All right, we're now live on Facebook. We'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. Thank you for everyone who is here tonight. Let's see, running down the list, I see for our board members Jeff Stevens, Conchen, Pam, Rich, Brandy, Ted, Terry Ong. Committee chairs, I see Marv, and we have several guests. Thank you all for being here. Tonight, we're going to hear first from Councilmember Chris Kate. And then after that, Anthony George from the supervisor's office has a few things to fill us in on. So unless anyone has another topic we need to get to right off of that, we'll go ahead and start with Councilmember Kate. Good evening, Councilmember.
Good evening, everybody. I hope everyone had a safe and enjoyable 4th of July holiday despite the circumstances and the change from the norm. But all in all, hopefully everyone had a safe holiday. The last time I spoke, we were kind of in the midst of budget deliberations and discussions. And one of the things that I commented on were what the proposed cuts were going to be that the mayor had outlined in his proposed budget and then the revised budgets that was released. Since that time, on the 8th of June, we adopted our budget. And fortunately, a couple of things happened prior to that date. The most, probably most important thing was that the CARES Act money that we received from the federal government, which accounted for about $270 million in CARES Act money. The Department of Treasury released some regulations regarding the use of that fund that allowed cities and agencies, public agencies that receive that money to be a little bit more open in how they spend that money on public safety. I was concerned, a number of us were concerned, that the strings attached and limitations on that funding may prevent us from actually utilizing a large amount of those dollars. But because the feds essentially lightened the load for us in terms of regulations, we were able to utilize all of those funds. What that allowed for was the ability to offset any cuts that would have come to major public services. So things like library hours, recreation center hours, cutting of weed abatement or graffiti abeyments, or tree trimming, or a pothole repair crew. So a lot of those original cuts that the mayor had allowed us to restore those services when we got to deliberating our budget. So all the things that, and I mean, it caused a fuss about and caused a scare about when we spoke last, that seemed real at the time, ended up not being real at the end of the day. So we were able to restore the funding that was originally cut in our library hours. So we're not going to see any cuts to library hours when eventually those open up again. Neither are we going to see cuts to our pothole repair crew. They had originally intended to cut one of the nine crews that we had for refilling potholes, which would have delayed our ability to get to requests. That has been restored. The weed abatement money has been restored. The graffiti abatement money has been restored. The tree trimming money has been restored. So all good things that we were able to put back into our budget. Additionally, one of the things that we were able to do as well is voters approved back in 2018, or 2016, excuse me, 2016, if I'm recalling my memory so bad now, was the creation of the city's infrastructure fund, which dedicated a portion of property tax and sales tax money to a dedicated fund that would go towards the city's infrastructure backlog. There was an out clause in that measure that in times of circumstance where we have budget deficits, that the mayor can essentially use the funding from that to backfill cuts to other programs. The mayor had originally intended to take all of the money, it's about $17 million. What we're able to do is restore about $5.6 million back into that fund that goes to things like sidewalk repairs. It goes to things like streetlights and other infrastructure needs throughout the city. At the end of the day, $5.6 million isn't a lot for the entire city. But it just shows that we were able to restore some of that funding back into that program, which is a good thing. So all in all, ended up not being the worst of budgets, given the circumstances. The only thing that is somewhat concerning are the forecast in revenues that we have put forward. You know, the intent at the outset was that things would get back to normal, quote unquote, by December. We have a number of major conventions that are scheduled to come in the December 1st part of the year that generate, you know, close to $10 million in economic activity for us as a city in terms of tourist tax revenue and sales tax revenue. So if things continue to progress the way that they seem to be going and based on today's action, there may be some mid-year adjustments that may need to be made. So that's something that we're keeping a close eye on and we will be keeping a close eye on as we move forward through the year is what our projections are going to be in terms of sales tax revenue and tourist tax revenue. Property tax really hasn't been impacted. Suffice it to say, throughout this pandemic, it's been sales tax and tourist tax, which shows our second and third largest source of revenue, that has been heavily impacted. So those are things that we will continue to monitor and see how things progress through the fiscal year and what needs to be changed when we get to that point in the mid-year adjustments in the January, February timeframe. So Madam Chair, that's essentially all I really have. You know, I'd like to keep opportunity to have more Q and A and dialogue. But suffice it to say, hopefully, sooner rather than later, we're able to enjoy the things that we actually funded in our budget.
That would be good. I'm glad to hear that some of the proposed cuts did not happen. And services will be there as soon as we are able to come out and play, so to speak. And on that note, I saw a letter from you today. Why don't you go ahead and let everybody know what that letter is about?
Yeah, so as you mentioned, or as was mentioned, and I mentioned, I talked about as well too, was the governor's decision to place San Diego on essentially his watch list, which allowed the county board supervisors in the county and the county public health officer to make a determination as to whether or not they want to fulfill that outline, that order from the governor in regards to rolling back essentially indoor operations of things like restaurants, zoos, museums, card rooms. There's one other thing on the list, it's just going to be my mind right now. Essentially, what we wrote to the Board of Supervisors today is, and that closure would remain in effect until July 28th. So essentially, the rest of July, you know, restaurants and other indoor operations that have invested heavily, lots of money to ensure the protections of their customers who come inside of their establishments would be lost, suffice it to say. You know, the staffing up that has gone into rehiring some of these folks or bringing them aboard is lost for the month of July, which is a huge expense for these folks who have, you know, very slim margins when it comes to their businesses. We wrote a letter to the Board of Supervisors today for their meeting tomorrow that essentially says, "We want you to reconsider the timeline of this and evaluate the county's data by July 20th", which would, you know, eight days, it doesn't seem like a lot, but actually is, allow for the county to reevaluate if country reopen earlier than the end of July. It was somewhat odd, I should say, is that today I was going down businesses up and down Miramasa Boulevard, some of our smaller folks, and handing out PPE that was generously donated by the Asian Business Association, the Small Business Development Center, to help out these small businesses. I'm going inside these establishments where they have operations inside and handing out PPE to use for their customers or their employees. And lo and behold, the county or the governor's holding a press conference at the same exact time saying, "Oh, well, we're actually going to, we're going to close you this week." So it was a little odd that that was happening at the same time. But now, these are very small businesses and they generate a lot of economic activity for folks, especially, you know, our brewers as another example, where these folks invested heavily in restarting. And it's unfortunate we're put in this position. Suffice it to say, you know, the health of the residents is first and foremost. And those who are most vulnerable should stay indoors, wear a mask, take all precautions as necessary. But there are a lot of businesses who are complying with the rules, who I think are arbitrarily being told to shut down and causing great harm. And there's a lot that is not discussed when we talk about health for residents when it comes to COVID-19. There's actually the disease of COVID-19. But there's everything else that comes with that, especially as a business owner, whether that's mental health, it's talking about the livelihood of these folks, it's talking the ability of people to work and generate and put food on table, poverty issues, food insecurity. These are all things that are very detrimental to residents that, yes, they may not have gotten the disease, may not have to go to a hospital or may not have symptoms, but they're still feeling the impacts. And their voice should not be diminished during all this. And that's what we're trying to cause attention to. Not saying at the expense of anything, but also saying there's a voice to be had there, especially with a region and a neighborhood at Miramasa that is as diverse as we are when it comes to small minority-owned businesses. So that's been our focus through all of this.
Excellent. Thank you for sending out that letter. There's one other topic that's really hot. And in fact, Voices of San Diego had their own take on it this morning in an article. And that's the complete communities. I didn't know if you wanted to speak on that a few minutes. And Jeff Stevens from the planning group will have a few questions.
And we've talked about this at length, a number of meetings. And I've shared my concerns on this. And, you know, it's interesting because the complete communities package is essentially a piecemeal approach to a number of different proposals and policies that will be considered by the council throughout the year. It doesn't just come with, you know, the Parks Master Plan as an example. There's a whole series of actions that, you know, we haven't been briefed on yet. I haven't seen the final language on any of these things. And then this stuff has come to council as a whole yet. So obviously, the devil's in the details. But the one thing, the impression that I have stated numerous times to you, and I'll state it again, is that what concerns me is the amount of effort that's being put forward by planning groups and neighborhoods and communities as we go through things like community plan updates and whatnots. And to outline a series of improvements, working with developers on improvements that are needed, things of that sorts, with the understanding that there will be funding that will come to pay for these improvements, whether they're mitigation efforts when it comes to traffic and transportation, whether it comes to parks, whether it comes to other community benefit, human benefit, infrastructure, whether it's, you know, fire, police, you name it. Being told one thing, a certain amount of money will be invested in a community, and then being said in the next voice that that money may be directed to other communities in the city by a vote of the council, that gives me great angst. I've expressed that numerous times to the mayor himself, the mayor's office, staff, planning staff, who've been overseeing this, all of that. So again, I haven't seen the final details of all this yet, but that's my biggest concern. If we could get down to a discussion of, you know, should we move from LOS to VMT? You know, I know the state gives us the option to do that. We don't necessarily have to do that. I don't see a downside to moving to VMTs, especially if during the community plan update process, we're outlining what the mitigation improvements are going to need to be for various development projects throughout each and individual neighborhoods. And I'm going through three community plan updates right now. Not only Miramasa, Kearney Mesa will be adopted by the end of this year. Clermont is almost there as well too. And we're going through all this and all the neighborhoods in our district. And so my hope is that, at the end of this, what we're promising to communities actually will be delivered to communities.
Okay, and I'm going to go ahead and turn the floor over to Jeff Stevens right now. For those watching who don't know, Jeff is the Chair of the Miramasa Community Planning Group. And he has a few questions about this proposal. Jeff?
Okay, Chris, so you already addressed some of these. The diversion of funding is definitely, I would say, the biggest issue with this. But there are a lot of other problems with this also. You know, just from the start, it contains an awful lot of self-congratulatory text. It's got lots of phrases like, "Delivering on his vision of creating equitable, healthy, and sustainable neighborhoods that are diverse, walkable, connected, safe, and inclusive."
That's government for you.
Excuse me?
That's government for you.
Yeah, you know, this is kind of new. I mean, if you look at the last community plan we did in the 1992, it doesn't look like that. It's got, "This is what we're going to do, and this is how we're going to do it." This is hype, basically, to try to make this more acceptable. And the, you know, the actual provisions in it are very troublesome. So did Barry send you these earlier? Have you seen these?
Yeah.
Okay, but I'd like to read them anyway, just because, yeah, I think everyone should hear what these are. So the first one is that the core goal of the program is to add more housing, in particular, to add high-density housing.
Recording has started.
In particular, to allow high-density housing in existing neighborhoods. Now, the current general plan also provides for growth and development. But it has a principle that development pays its own way. As this new housing development, housing is developed, developers pay for the infrastructure needed for the new residents through the FBA or other programs. As far as I can tell, that principle is completely abandoned in the proposed program. There's no longer any direct connection between development and the corresponding infrastructure and public facilities needed to support it. Second issue, the parks program we mentioned. The planning commission did make a few improvements in this, which if the city council adopts, will fix some of this. But they call this play all day, again, an awful lot of hype. The biggest thing is it removes the population base acreage requirement in the current general plan, replacing it with an ill-defined point system that's focused on adding more features to existing parks rather than acquiring new acreage. But because parkland is difficult to acquire in some areas, the new plan essentially gives up on trying. And the problem with that is, if you're going to acquire land, you need to do it as early as possible, because it's always going to be harder to get more expensive later on. So and if this had actually been in effect when we did our last community plan update, we would have cut in half the number of parks that we have in this community. Then the third thing, which we've already mentioned, is that the program replaces community-based fees based on the community plans, such as the FBA, with a citywide development impact fee that can be spent anywhere in the city. The effect of that will be to make it impossible to complete projects in the existing community plans as fees are diverted to other parts of the city that are more deficient than our community. And as we've discussed before, if we can, at the city council level, at least manage to preserve our FBA programs intact, that will solve most of that problem. Going on to transportation, the program changes the transportation impact analysis from level of service to vehicle miles traveled. While vehicle miles traveled is a good thing to look at, it's a lot fuzzier and harder to measure. And it essentially means that if you're not going to look at the level of service changes at the time you're planning the community and individual projects, basically means that the impact of new development and traffic congestion will no longer be a consideration when approving new projects. Fifth area, the program counts on people using public transit instead of driving and defines Miramasa Boulevard as a transit priority area. However, there's no plan for actually providing the level of transit service that this would require. The last one, the program contains some wonderful sounding plans for wide sidewalks and bicycle lanes, but no plans for actually paying for them. And that's pervasive through the whole program. There are lots of wonderful sounding things, at least if you don't think too deeply about them. But there's no analysis of the plan as yet to show that the fees raised would pay for the infrastructure that's required. So what do you think?
So, okay, my turn now. Okay. So I don't necessarily disagree with everything that you said, you know. Again, this hasn't come to us, and a lot of the details haven't been filled out yet in terms of the language. So I'm going to put caution saying that I'm holding contempt for something that I haven't seen yet. It hasn't come to us yet. I do share the concerns, which I outlined earlier with you on your first and your third points as an example of, you know, going through a community plan update and outlining the benefits and how it'll be paid for, then to have those dollars go to a general pot that can be used in other communities. That's a huge concern. I think your first and third points go hand in hand in that. I kind of just called time I had in the comments. On park acreage, I'm not necessarily against that, in all honesty. I'll tell you why. If you look at some of the neighborhoods in the southern part of the city, especially even the northern part of the city in some areas, like Kearney Mesa as an example, there aren't going to be any new parks, plain and simple. We're not going to buy land. There's just no way that we as a city could afford it to buy, and only buy property that is zoned for highest and best use that goes beyond a park, which the property owner's not going to discount for the price of land, because we're not going to use its highest and best use from previous number of parks. It's just not going to happen. So and you look at areas like Dalboa Park, you know, whether you're in Golden Hill or North Park or Hillcrest, I mean, Dalboa Park doesn't count right now. No, shouldn't it? How about the beach? You know, how about Mission Bay, Mission Bay Park? Those places should count as well too. So we are in a different time than we were when Miramasa did its last community plan updates. So I think it's wholly fine to reevaluate the goals of this. Not to say that we're not going to do what we can. Kearney Mesa, as an example, there's a lot of discussion in Kearney Mesa community plan right now that talks about having pocket parks, areas, smaller areas of recreation on property owners that allows them to do that and use the setbacks as areas where they can do pocket parks, things of that sort, alleyways, things of that sort. How do you activate some of these areas and have that count as a, quote unquote, recreation area in certain areas? So I'm not necessarily against that, given the situation that we're in and that we, whether it's Miramasa or Clermont, other neighborhoods have invested, Ranch Masquitos have invested heavily over the last two, three decades to get parks based on the work that folks like you have all done and set that standard. So I think it's perfectly okay to reevaluate that. You know, what's the final document? What's to be said? You know, there could be always be areas for improvement. In terms of traffic improvements on VMTs versus LOS, you know, that's something that I raised when this came to our committee back in October when it was a first blush over, is that if you look at areas, let's just along the 56th corridor, you know, Ranch Masquitos, area of Camilo del Sur, Black Mountain Road, et cetera. Those are in a TPA. And there's this kind of push between developers and the neighborhood of saying, "Okay, well, you know, we want to have jobs in transit here, but there is no transit." And so it's a chicken or egg decision of, do you not develop in these areas because there is no transit? Or do you wait for transit to be developed? And what I've gone back to staff and said is that if you're telling a developer who wants to invest in this area because there's homes there and you want to keep people near where they work, their investment, their fees are paying that go to transit. If they don't go to that area and go to another community, you're essentially telling that neighborhood that they'll never get transit. Therefore, you're telling that community that they should be arguing against developments in that area because of the fact that they'll never get transit. It doesn't make any sense. So there has to be some type of give and take in terms of investment in there as understanding that it's expensive. You know, we asked MTS to do a pilot program, to do bus routes along the 56th corridor just to see what would happen, you know, a minor investment to a pilot program to see if it would work or not. So there's that give and take on that stack, especially for areas that are not in a TPA. Now, when it comes to improvements, that goes back to my discussion about the community plan. The community plans aren't going anywhere. Community plan updates aren't stopping. And I don't think that this, these set of documents is necessarily the place where you want to put individual community improvements in. You want to put them within the community plans. But they have to be in sync with each other. And that's where I've challenged staff, is that I don't think that these things are in sync because of the fact that we're saying in Miramasa, if you have this level of density adopted with the community plan updates, you would expect X millions of dollars in FBA funds to pay for various improvements. Well, if you're taking that funding and saying that it's not specifically allocated to Miramasa, well, you're essentially not telling the truth to community members when you're there adopting the community plan update, when you're saying this is much money is going to your community. So there has to be harmony between these documents. I don't, it sounds like, again, I haven't seen all the documents yet, but it sounds like, and I communicated this, that these things are in harmony with each other. And that's a big frustration of mine.
Okay.
Right. Just a couple of follow-ups.
That's a lot of policy-wong talks. I apologize if people weren't getting any of that.
No, that's good. No, we haven't seen the final versions of these either. But we have, the preliminary versions are online. And we have, you know, CPC, we've been taking a close look at those.
Sure.
There are some horror stories. As far as transit goes, one other example, you know, we have these two big projects in Carroll Canyon. They're exactly what the city says they want, high-density projects, you know, 6,500 units along Carroll Canyon Road. And MTS forgot about them when they were doing their transit plan. There's essentially no transit in the existing plan to support those projects. Now, they've since been trying to fix some of that. But, you know, when you're, these things have been in the works since, you know, for at least 15 years for the city and MTS not to at least try to incorporate these into their plans is a big oversight.
Yeah, I'll say this. I mean, so Sandag does their planning. And, I mean, they do analysis on a various level of projects and services along certain corridors. You know, you recall when they did the last RTP in Mezuray, and they had the purple line that went up the 805, right? And up to Miramasa Boulevard and 805 and had, you know, rail line going up there. So they plan out certain levels of service. It's just a matter of funding and a matter, it comes down to money. Is there going to be money to pay for some of these things? They do these various projects, would say, the funded scenario, kind of the, a little bit more expensive scenario than we currently have allocated. I can't remember the names exactly. And then there's just this dream scenario of, if we had all the money in the world, here's what we could do. Like it's a constrained, revenue constrained, unconstrained, and then something else. But Sandag has been in discussions on Three Roots, on Stone Creek. They've been involved in discussions. Now, things can change when we get to eventual build-outs. And we get to a point where we actually build through Carroll Canyon Road east to west. We approve funding for the city, start studying the western connection of Carroll Canyon Road as well too. Thank God, we've been pushing on that for a while as well. So, you know, I think between now and eventual full build-out, there will be discussions about the service that does accompany these development projects. But, you know, I'm not going to hold against them that there isn't a plan today that says, you know, when this is all built out 25 years from now, there will be, you know, this many routes and these many, you know, headways on Carroll Canyon Road. I don't think they're quite there yet, and I'm not too far from holding that against them today. But they have been involved in discussions of the projects.
Uh huh. Do you give us an update on the western extension of Carroll Canyon Road through the cemetery?
So we just, yes, we just approved, I think it was 850,000. I think that's the number that comes to mind, somewhere in that ballpark, for staff to start studying the different alignments for the Carroll Canyon extension on the western end through the cemetery. You know, it'll be some time before that gets started underway. But council approved the funding, I want to say, three weeks ago, maybe? Two, three weeks ago, we approved the funding for that?
Okay, well, that's a start.
That's, again, something that we've been advocating for. I know you guys have been harping on me about as well too, is to be prepared for this. And that's, this is part of that.
Yeah, appreciate that.
Of course.
Okay, before we open the floor to more questions, I'll just throw one out at you. Of course, we're talking about taking all these Of course, we're talking about taking all these funds and reallocating them. Has the city looked at any other opportunities to find funding elsewhere? And I'd like to hear if we have and then throw my old story. I'm sure you've heard it. My my complaint about I what I see is lack of vision. So what else has the city looked at?
I don't. I don't disagree with you on that. You know, we we've had different opportunity, funding opportunities that we've used to build other parks throughout the neighborhoods, depending upon, you know, the location of the parks, who they're serving. We've used CBPG funding to build parks in different neighborhoods. You know, we've used developer funding. We've we've coupled together different sources. We've used some bond money to pay for different parks. You know, it comes down to priorities, you know, and 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 I've said this throughout my time on the council, you know, and you know, council member will 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 harp on, well, we don't invest in this. We don't invest in that. Well, you know, those funds come from somewhere that you have to prioritize the funny, you know, should we be doing investing millions of dollars? I'm I'm just kind of mine. I'm not disparaging it, but should we be spending millions of dollars on private action plan implementation? Should we spend millions of dollars on living wage compliance and going after businesses? I mean, you may say yes, and that's great, but that comes at the expense of something. That's money you couldn't use to build a new park somewhere. You know, in some of these other development, these communities, there's a big discussion about gentrification, right? And I have been wanting to say, because, you know, I get yelled at by community members not in Mir Mesa. Why are you spending forty million dollars on a park? Well, developers pay for that. You know, you'd be that see that big tower off of 15. They're paying for this. You know, do you want to take 5,000 units? You can pay for that. Well, then you get in discussion some of these other neighborhoods about gentrification. You know, do you want to see that type of level development that would pay for some of these improvements versus what are the impacts of that? That's a big discussion. It's a big debate that has a lot of opinions on both sides. So there's just a lot of conversations around this issue. But no one wants to get, I think, in to the meat of it and to have a real discussion about where we're allocating dollars. What are that? What is that going to? Could it be going to a different and better use that has a more lasting impact on the community than what that money could have otherwise gone for?
Well, as you know, I've probably told you my horror story of the first time I tried to get involved with the city to get a park improvement. This was I had to go back and look. It was in 2010. And we were given the opportunity by a national nonprofit to have them come in and redo a playground in the Mir Mesa area. That was the Walker Tot Lot. It would have cost the community fifteen thousand dollars out of our FBA funds. They were going to use the same vendors, same equipment the city does. Had to fight tooth and nail to get anybody to talk to me downtown, someone from Park and Rec who I will shall remain nameless. And in the end, all they would say to me was that the city attorney didn't like one sentence in the contract with this national nonprofit and then cut off all communication. And later, a private entity in North County got that wonderful playground rebuild. And about four or five years later, Park and Rec came back and not at a cost of fifteen thousand from our FBA funds, but at a cost of three hundred and fifteen thousand from our FBA funds did the same job. Why is the city so incapable of finding public private partnerships to take some of the load off of our tax funds?
Yeah. Because it's because A, it's hard or B, it's never been done that way before. I mean, that's just that's just the reality that we we've we've tried to do this. I mean, whether it's volunteers or whatever else to, you know, sprucing up dilapidated buildings that just haven't received attention just becomes very difficult to get to. Yes, which is just again, I think comes with your advocacy, unfortunately.
So I will say to you, I came here from New Orleans, which we used to jokingly refer to as the city of no. And I was able there to get both this national nonprofit
Yeah.
and the NFL to redo playgrounds at no cost to the city. Completely up to spec. Frank ones is a lot more problems than San Diego does. I would think as well run as we all, somebody could figure out how to do this. So that's that's my response.
Yeah, I don't disagree.
Yeah. Is anybody else on board that has a question? Okay, do any of our audience members, I'll ask you, go ahead and click at that little people icon at the top. If you are on the Blue Jeans meeting with us, raise your hand and we will go ahead and unmute you for a question.
Not seeing any, Barry.
I think Pam's raising her hand.
Yes, I I'm raising my hand. Sorry, I'm a little slow as a board member. It's both a comment and a question. Chris, I think the Park acreage thing that you mentioned, a lot of the problem is that it was being undervalued because some of what was happening in valuing other features of parks in areas where it's hard to simply do acreage is a good part of the plan. But Park acreage was being devalued. And at the Planning Commission meeting that I attended, as well as Jeff, there were a lot of good comments made and hopefully what is coming to city council will be tweaked sufficiently that it is something that makes sense. But if it needs more tweaking at your level, too, we'll be in touch.
Sure, absolutely.
Hey, anyone else out there have a question? Okay, I think we've covered everything.
Awesome.
I was going to ask one question. This is Marv. I don't know if the council member and those guys are aware about our problem with the seniors, not the senior center, the teen center and boards and people just having a lot of destruction there. So we were told that Christian Hopp was going to be with the city and they were going to get boards up. And so Ted and I were over there. There's a lot of people. I'm just trying to figure out if somebody's on the switch here or are they kind of just
Yeah, we we've been trying to work with real estate assets and all of this on on the epicenter for for a number of years now. I think you guys are well aware. I think a lot of it got pushed on hold. To be quite frank with you, when when COVID happened, we it was in the midst of when we were released the RFP. A lot of things, especially with real estate assets, got pushed to the back burner. SDSU West came about as well, too. So now that that's all done and, you know, gone and out of the way. My hope is that people's attention will revert back. I mean, God bless Luis. I mean, he's he's on them, you know, all the time trying to get attention placed on this because it's it's such a a big deal to to the community. You know, we will do a better job of of trying to force their hand on on this to get the RFP out, get someone in that building. So we don't have the boards up. We don't have the you know, the vandalism that has happened at that center for for some time now and and get some some TLC to that building.
Chris, let me take just a TLC means total lot clearing. So we spent a lot of money, the community spent a lot of money to turn that piece of crap into another piece of crap. So I'm very concerned that along with many people, Ted and Bruce Brown, like a stuff that it's just they smashed the glass in the front entrance and, you know, I don't know if they're going to board it up or it just looks like a terrible eyesore.
I was I was there today and and, you know, it we shouldn't. You should have to shake your head every time you go to that parking lot.
Now, Chris, I I when the damage occurred over the weekend, I called the police and filed all the reports. And eventually I got a call from Jane Vanderhagen, who I'm sure Barry has spoken to many times. And Jane's a wonderful lady. Don't get me wrong. But my point in calling real estate assets was please, oh, please take care of this property the people have entrusted you with. They have no intention of ever doing that. If you want to go tear that building down, get a hammer and go over there because nobody's going to stop you. And that's a sad comment. That's
I don't
despicable.
Yeah, I don't disagree.
So we have, by the way, taken action and spent RSVP money to put up plywood, put things together. We're doing checks on the building. You know, so, you know, we we are not going to ignore it. We're not going to follow after our city leader. I I just I like Jane, but damn it, she's got to do something. Get off her butt and get out there. And unfortunately, you know well that the Community Development Block Grant Rules, Barry, you can fill him in on this better than I can. Are the the what's stopping us from doing anything with that property? Somebody needs to step on that.
I don't disagree. I don't disagree with you. We we've we've talked about it ad nauseam with 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 folks who've looked at that building with interest.
Rather than find a way to break that silly stupid little rule, we're going to let that building sit there and rot? I I don't get it. I just don't get it. Sorry.
I I'll disagree a little bit because breaking that rule could mean that could be, just for lack of other examples, a McDonald's or a Starbucks, which is really not what we want. The rule, as it's set, would keep that for a nonprofit community based use. The problem is that there was no oversight in place to make sure that that building was not running into the ground, just deteriorating physically. I think real estate assets premise that the previous tenants would take care of all repairs, major and minor. We, as a community, kicked in quite a bit of money. They did go get some Community Development Block Grant Funds. There's still, I believe it's a three year hold on that building that it must be used for certain activities. And I those activities actually fit in better with that location. I would much rather see a community based use for that building than to see it turned into a commercial enterprise. It would better fit the whole structure of that area. However, we can do this so much better than it's been done.
Well said.
So Chris, should we contact you in what a week, 10 days?
You can. You can call anytime, Marv.
Yeah. No, I was looking for answers.
Yeah. And we will. And we will. We will hopefully get answers for you. Absolutely.
Excellent. All right. Thank you so much
Thank you, everybody.
being here to explain all of that. There are a lot of things going on. Appreciate it.
Anytime. Thank you all. Have a good night.
Thanks, Chris.
Good night, Chris. Thank you.
Bye bye.
All right, is Anthony George here?
I am here. Can you hear me?
Yes, indeed. Why don't you go ahead and and give us the some information? Are you? Let's see. I think you're muted.
Okay, I think I'm unmuted now.
There you go.
Awesome. Well, thank you, everyone. And I'm glad to be here tonight. So a couple of updates. I sent Barry earlier this afternoon an email with some helpful web links that would be helpful in folks that are trying to get some information regarding COVID and board meetings. So on that list I shared, there's links to the virtual board meetings as well as comment submissions. If you have comments that you'd like to submit prior to the board meeting. For folks who see violations at businesses related to face mask coverings and COVID, there is a link as well on there. Testing sites and appointments. I did add a link there. There is a county ran testing site at the Senior Center in Mir Mesa, Wednesdays and Fridays. I think they believe I believe they start at 9:00 AM. But you can make appointments online with the link I shared. Along with that link, there is the the Public Health Order that's effective July 1st. List of business openings and current closures, as well as the link to all the triggers that reinstated modified restrictions. So those will be helpful links for folks who are looking for more information or if they see something at a business that shouldn't be happening. And then with that, I know it was mentioned earlier that as of tonight, there will be closures in the county for certain businesses. The the county of San Diego was on the the state's monitoring list for three consecutive for the sorry, for three consecutive days, I believe. And that triggered the San Diego County to be put on the rollback list. So activities for that will be restricted will be including dining dine in. So no more dine in patio dining or outdoor dining is permitted as well as drive through and curbside pickup is permitted, but in in store or in restaurant dining is not permitted. Along with this, movie theaters, family entertainment centers such as bowling alleys and batting cages, museums, zoos and card rooms will all be rolling back and for foreclosures for the next three weeks. You know, it's unfortunate. Our office shares the same sentiment as Councilmember Kate scared of that, you know, we want to make sure that our businesses are doing the right thing and practicing the safety guidelines that are permitted. But with COVID restrictions, it is having a very, 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 very heavy economic impact here in San Diego. And we want to support our businesses and, you know, Supervisor Gaspar doesn't believe toggling our 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 economy is is the best thing to do. You know, we open one week and close another week. And that uncertainty is very scary for businesses here in San Diego. And along with the business, that impacts employment. So we want to make sure that we are reopening safely and we are making sure that businesses are doing the right thing. But you know, we don't believe that turning on and off the business switch is the right thing to do. I think there's a better strategy there and that's what Supervisors Gaspar will be working on into putting together a a better strategy to manage our businesses here in San Diego. With that, as you know, we are closing. We are rolling back a lot of the businesses here in San Diego. So please be conscious and aware. Follow the links that have been provided earlier. I'll share a lot of a wealth of information to the board members and to the community. And then one last thing is that there's been, you know, reports by Supervisor Fletcher of certain count or certain board members, such as my boss Supervisor Gaspar, as circumventing the health system and trying to get things reopened earlier than than expected. And I just want to let you know and Supervisor Gaspar wants to let the community know that that is misinformation and that is not happening. The hierarchy here in California is the governor. Well, when it regards to in regards to public health, it's the governor and then it's the county public health official. Supervisors don't have any ability to reopen things on, you know, as they as they please and choose. So we just want to let the community know that those claims are false. And Supervisor Gaspar has publicly said said that in response to Supervisor Fletcher's accusation. So just want to let the community know that we are working to move San Diego forward and that's our priority as and and maintaining the the health guidance that the state and the county health official is promoting. So if there are any questions, feel free to reach out to me. I believe my email is out there, but it is anthony george at sdcounty.ca.gov. There are any questions related to COVID or business or anything that the county has jurisdiction over, please feel free to reach out. I'm always happy to share information. And with that, I'll be happy to take questions if there are any.
Thanks, Anthony. I see Ted Bangle has his hand up.
All right. Hey, Ted, how are you doing, sir?
Great, Anthony. I just like to point out that the supervisor who made those claims about Supervisor Gaspar is also the supervisor who said the participation in peaceful demonstrations with huge quotes around it has no effect
Yeah.
on your chances of catching COVID-19, an obvious lie. So
Right.
There we have a real problem with that.
There is a problem there, and I appreciate you pointing that that out, Ted. And as as you know, my boss isn't isn't scared to back away from, you know, from calling out false accusations. And she's publicly said that. And, you know, when you know, there are a lot of outlandish policies and, you know, things that we feel are kind of impossible for San Diego, you know, a county of our size to to comply to. So, you know, whenever we see those Supervisor Gaspar is, you know, happy and willing to call that out. And we're happy to work with anyone who's you know, willing to make, you know, reasonable guidelines here in in the county. And, you know, we want to make sure that the And, you know, we want to make sure that the community is heard. We want to make sure that our businesses and employment is is, you know, as strong as we can have it. But we want to make sure that the information that's being put out is also correct. So Ted, I appreciate you pointing that out as well. And that's, you know, another issue that we have with Supervisor Fletcher and the claims that he's making. And again, there's no way for a board supervisor to circumvent the the governor's office and the public health office. So, you know, those things are are false or those accusations are false. And, you know, we want to make sure the community knows that Supervisor Gaspar isn't doing anything of the sort. And, you know, if there are any questions of transparency, reach out to me. I'm happy to answer those and show you anything that you need.
Excellent. Thank you. I see Sabrina Bazo has raised her hand. Sabrina?
Okay. Hi, Sabrina.
I think she's still muted.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Sorry. Yeah. Yeah, I was just gonna point out also, though, I've been a public health educator in the San Diego community for the last 30 years. And I also think it's very concerning around this issue that there have been attacks on our public health officers because of the restrictions that they have had to make. And those public health educators or I'm sorry, those public health officers, Wilma Wooton specifically, who I've worked with, are trying to protect our lives. So I also think, you know, in in saying this, and we want to, we do want to open businesses, but we want to be careful because there there might be times when we have to pull back. And I think looking at the science and looking at the data is going to be the most important thing. And we need to not cut our public health officers down. They're working day and night to make these decisions, you know, to keep our us safe. And so I think what they say we need to support and we need to respect and back, you know, their them and see that, you know, they're professionals and that's their job. And, you know, we need to to, you know, keep that in mind as well.
Sabrina, you're absolutely right. And Supervisor Gaspar had gotten advice from Wilma regarding any policy that we're we're working with. You know, we don't do these things blindly, and we do go by the numbers. And, you know, there have been some questions on the numbers. But every step of the way, we have been working with our public health officials because Supervisor Gaspar does respect and 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 take into consideration the advice that Dr. Wooton has shared. And, you know, we can mender on the work. It's a hard job. You're right. They're working day and night, and it is to protect San Diego. And we want to make sure that they have the support of the board members. But we also want to make sure that we have the support of the community when we're making these types of decisions. So you're absolutely right, and I appreciate you appreciate you pointing that out, Sabrina.
Does anyone else have a question?
Well, I wanted to say another wonderful shocking truth I heard today. I have a tenant who works, she is a paramedic on AMR ambulance. And believe it or not, these folks have had rocks and bottles and crap thrown at them when they're out there trying to save people from accidents, that kind of stuff. I I couldn't even believe that this was happening. But I know her and I know she's telling me the truth. And I was like, I can't believe.
Yeah, your story, your story is not the only one. I have friends in the paramedic who are paramedics, and they've shared the same same thing is that, you know, in past history, you know, the paramedics and firefighters, usually they've been the ones that everyone's kind of like, okay, we need, we want them here. They're there to to save a life, you know, and not give someone a ticket or something. But with the with the climate that we're in right now politically and socially, we have, I've heard personally, I've heard more reports of the same thing that you're bringing up right now. And that's very unfortunate. And we want to do what we can to support our our frontline. So that is unfortunate. And if there are, if you hear anything like that, let us know. And we can work with all law enforcement agencies to make sure that they are protected because they are the folks that are responding to to the bad things, you know. They're not getting called out when when, you know, there's there's good things happening. They're getting called out when something that someone's in in trouble. So we need to support them, and we need to make sure that they can get to the to their job and do what they need to do to save a life in a safe manner as well on their end. So thank you for sharing that. And, you know, what you've shared isn't the only report that I've heard, unfortunately.
It was surprising to me. She's based out of the Ranch of Bernardo station. Like, what?
Oh, wow.
Yeah.
Huh. That's that's unfortunate.
All right. Well, I think that's everybody. Anthony, thank you so much for coming in tonight to talk about the.
No worries. No worries. Thanks, Barry. Thanks, board. Look forward to meeting you guys face-to-face again. And if there's anything I can do to help, please feel free to reach out. You know, I'll always respond.
Absolutely. Thanks so much for that.
All right. Have a good night, and anything you need, let me know.
Absolutely. Take care.
All right. Good night.
I know Sabrina's still alive. You might want to talk with him.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna do. I'm gonna go down the list here. Leo Angelo, you there? Let's see.
Hi, guys.
Hi, how are you doing?
I'm doing good. How are you? How are you guys?
Hey, good to see you.
Good to see you.
So did you want to give us any kind of update on what you've been doing with all your adventures?
Yeah, so far I have one artist out, and then we did get the shirts for free. I think the person just forgot somehow. I don't know. But we got we got shirts. So if you see us out there, we'll have Miramesa art on the back of our shirts that'll distinguish us from other other artists. And and yeah, thanks for getting us all the paint we need so we can get busy this summer. I I'm trying to get, I'm still trying to get the former president of the Art Club from Miramesa High. And I I think I think I have to reach out to her mom because maybe she doesn't know who I am on Facebook or whatever. But I'm I'm friends with her mom, so and and she was excited to do it. So I'm just trying to like recollect my artists because this was something we were supposed to do like maybe three months back, but then COVID kind of kind of halted a lot of things. But now we have paint, we have the shirts. Is there is there a specific permit we should make or should I just create one?
Um, we'll go ahead. We'll talk offline about if there's anything you should have, like a letter from the town council. And just for those listening who don't know, we were able to get a little grant money. And we work with SDG&E because their procedures have changed about art on power boxes. It used to be a very informal thing where the an organization like the town council could call them up and say, we're gonna paint the boxes. And they would just say to us, don't do anything political, don't do anything controversial, don't do anything offensive, and you're good to go. Now, we have had to register each box that we're going to work on. And months ago, we sent them a list of 28 proposed boxes. They finally came back to us. They approved 21 of those. They're all in the Civic Center area by the park, the malls, the high school. And Lou Angel and I and Marv went on a shopping trip, as best we could do with social distancing and everything, got about, what did we get, 50, 60 gallons of paint? And some brushes, other supplies. So Lou Angel is organizing the artists to start redoing the power boxes in the center of Miramesa, which is going to be a really wonderful look as we all get to go out and work and play a little later this summer, early fall. It's going to be beautified, and he's getting a lot of the local artists who have done boxes in the past and some new ones, and is really going to make this look fantastic.
Great. That's awesome.
Hey, listen, the one person, if you can't get hold of somebody from Miramesa High, get hold of Jennifer Qualvic. She knows everybody.
Oh, yeah, we're we're connected. She's actually, well, I don't know if we're supposed to say anything, but we're we're on the works of maybe getting a mural in the high school. But that's kind of separate from the boxes.
Right, yeah.
We'll see. We'll see. Yeah, but but thanks, Ted.
We're looking forward to seeing the boxes, and they're gonna be fabulous.
Yeah, I'm excited to go up there, too. Oh, a question for me or?
Yeah, question for for Barry and Leo both. I remember it was awesome before when we had a gallery on the town council website of all the paintings that had been done. And that way, people knew where they were and could go see them. And at one point, we might have even done a vote for your favorite thing, just just a public awareness. So I imagine we could probably do something like that again.
Yeah, that'd be awesome. We should stay connected, Pam, and we could do something like that. Because I think that'd help the artists get some exposure, too, because we have a lot of good ones now.
Yeah, we can give them credit that way.
I'll take the pictures.
We've been having some conversations. If you want to see a program that I'm I'm actually familiar with, there is a website, cvunola.org. It's an organization that is just totally dedicated to redoing the power boxes. And they have a map where you can click on it. It pulls up a picture of the box, and there's a story behind the box, and it lists the artist's name. And they even go as far as doing miniatures of the boxes to raffle off at a fundraiser. So we're gonna have some really big and better things coming up.
Great.
Yeah, that's a neat idea, even like maybe putting some of the designs on shirts even. I mean, they're already gonna be out there in in public.
Yeah.
Everybody's aware Barry went out and got this grant. And so basically, we went over to Home Depot, and I I actually have a connection. So we saved like $203, $230, something like that. So obviously, Leo has 10 gallons of five different colors. So obviously, we did. I just did my first little tray for that little 16 ounces. So I should have the 32 ounces in about a week, so we can figure out what we're gonna do. So.
Excellent. Good. Hey.
CVU NOLA is fabulous. Community Visions Unlimited. Have a look at it.
Yep. Yep, that started very small, and now it's doing not only the city, but the suburbs. It's really expanded. Hey, is Rich here? Richie?
Yes.
Did you want to talk about Little League?
Hi, guys. How's everyone doing?
Hey.
Good.
Good.
So right now, we're trying to get a summer program together where the kids will at least in small groups practice and at least kick the fundamentals up. We had sign-ups. They just closed out last week. We had a pretty good showing, but now we're just kind of in a holding pattern, waiting for some direction. But we definitely want to get back on on the field.
Excellent. Yeah, keep us updated because if there's gonna be anything resembling baseball, we all want to know about it.
You and me both.
A longtime Little League mom. I definitely want to see it.
I'll let you guys know once there is something official.
Will they be able to spit? Are they allowed to spit? Are they allowed to spit?
Well, that was one of my first questions. Am I gonna be able to yell at the kids? It's it's gonna be really hard with a mask on your face. So because I do a lot of spitting when I when I yell.
They'll have to be distant.
Yeah, well, we've we've got rules that we we had to create. You know, just like in the restaurants where you have the thing on the the wall, we have a plan and all of that that we had to implement to parking wrecks in the in the county. And when the kids were signed up, they had to sign waivers, and the parents also had to sign waivers.
Maybe those glass face masks would work better than the cloth ones.
I think you're on to something, Jeff.
Oh, there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Uh huh. At least when just when you're coaching.
Okay, great. Yeah, definitely keep us posted. We want to put it out there and direct everybody the information. And if there's gonna be a season of any kind, we want to show all our support.
For sure, I will. Thank you.
I'm gonna jump away from the board for a minute. Our librarian, Ina, is here. And I think she wanted to give us a little update on what's happening with the libraries at this time. Ina?
There we go. Can you?
Yep.
Oh, yes. So we have some exciting news. For those who, okay, so for those of you who have been asking or know people who have been asking, we may now take returns. So if you have a pile of library books spilling over into your entire house, please feel free to bring them back. The book drops are open. We are still open for hold pickup service, so you can also check out more materials. And if you come to pick something up, feel free, we will give you a box, and you may put your items in them. We are quarantining the books. That seems to be the best way to make everyone safe. And they will not come off an account right away. It'll take probably closer to a week by the time it's quarantined and we process it. But baby steps forward, and we're actually doing it. So there you go. Today, we probably took 300 books back.
Wow.
I see Sabrina Bazo has a question.
Question. I just had an announcement once Ina was done.
Okay, I have a library-related thing for not so much a question for Ina, but a comment to add on. I I work at the University Community Branch Library in University City. So we are not a pickup location, but we're a location that sends books out for holds elsewhere. And we, too, have our book drop open. All the city branches now have book drops open for returns. You can't return them at the place where you get your pickups. You need to go to the book drop and put the things in the book drop. So it's a contact-free thing, but it's great. And also, I'm gonna email Chris K. to thank you for the funding for library department because even though our services are not our usual normal, we have our staffing for this new normal that we're doing right now. And it's wonderful to have the hourly people back again and helping with this additional level of service. So it's it's a great thing, and input and output, and we're all in this together. You can call a library and get help on the phone, too. Any of the branches can help you. And yeah, it's great.
Hey, I'm gonna run quickly, just check in with the other board members, see if any of the committees have anything going on. And then we're gonna start with Sabrina with with questions and announcements from the audience. So Brandy, do you have anything?
She just stepped away for a second.
We'll check back with her in a minute. Okay, Marv, did you have anything else?
Nope.
Okay.
No, Marv's among the dearly departed. No, there he is.
There's Brandy. Do you have any other announcements or information for us?
I do. Our memberships have just started anew June 30th. So if anyone hasn't paid their membership fees, go online and do so. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you. All right, let's do a check with Marv. Jeff, do you have anything else?
Yes, two things. Next planning group meeting will be in the third Monday in August, which I believe is the 17th. We have a big one on that on that meeting. We will have Stone Creek on the agenda for approval. That's the biggest project we've ever had in this community, 4,450 units. We've been reviewing it for like 15 years. So there shouldn't be too many surprises in it, but that's when we get to have our final say on the on the project. So and there's lots of information about it on the website. The ERR is out for review now. I suggest everyone take a look at that and come to the meeting if you have any comments. The other thing is the the other Big Carroll Canyon Project Three Roots, we approved some time ago. And that one is coming to Planning Commission at 9:00 a.m. on July 16th. So for anyone who wants to hear what the planning group or the planning commission has to say, you can log into that meeting.
Excellent. Thanks, Jeff. Conjan?
No, not for not anything for now.
Okay, thanks. Let's see. Ted, did you have anything?
No.
Okay, Terry?
Watch the parade.
Yes.
It was great, Terry.
Thank you, Terry. That parade was awesome. Thank you for all your work.
That was amazing. Thanks. I'm gonna pass on a note from Facebook, and then we're gonna jump over to Sabrina and go through our our visitors. Michael Spencer from Scripps Mesa Fireworks wants to let us know that the T-shirts with Janice's design are finally in, thanks to LCM T-shirt Shop. You can go to miramesafireworks.org/t-shirts to make a donation. You're gonna get a gift of one shirt for every. You're going to get a gift of one shirt for every $10 donation. For example, if you donate 50, you'll get five shirts. Quantities are limited on the adult sizes. Children's sizes, they still have a lot. So go on out there, make a donation to the fireworks so we can have our usual big, maybe even bigger and better next year. That's at miramesafireworks.org/t-shirts. And you can pick up one T-shirt for every $5 you donate.
Ten, right?
All right. $10, I'm sorry. One shirt for every $10. Sabrina, you had a comment?
Yeah, I just wanted to make a couple announcements on behalf of the Miramesa High School Foundation. First of all, they had, I was not able to attend, but they had their first Taste of Miramesa virtual planning meeting this past week. So they are planning on trying to do some type of Taste of Miramesa event in a virtual format. I'm not entirely sure what that's going to look like, but in talking with Jennifer Qualvic and Christine Height, it's going to be interesting. They were talking about doing something over a period of more than like a day, like a week long, and trying to make it like a pledge drive as well that we've done in the past. But we've kind of done that separate from Taste of Miramesa because they're kind of combining them together because obviously we weren't able to do membership, or we're not going to be able to probably do membership like we normally do this year. So just, hopefully be more information coming out about that. So I wanted to make sure you were on the, be on the lookout for that information. Taste of Miramesa, for anyone that doesn't know, is probably like the largest fundraiser in the district for a cluster school, a Miramesa cluster schools. You know, I don't know of any other cluster in the district as large that does as big of a fundraiser. And all the money goes back through to schools within Miramesa community, public and private, that are participating in the program. And then the other thing is, we have started a tutoring program. I know Pam was going to put something in the newsletter, or it might already be there, and I just haven't seen it yet. And basically, we wanted to help support students in the Miramesa community that are struggling with online learning. So we've teamed up with the principal at the high school, Jeff Sabans, as well as at Sandberg. And we want to branch out to some of the other schools. We just, you know, basically, we're kind of starting small, trying to work out. But we have several students from the high school who are volunteering just to help out, you know, just to help students that are struggling. And so I've been advertising through teachers at both schools as well as in the community through the Miramesa Living and, you know, on social media. But if you know students in K through 12 that are struggling with online learning or taking summer school, need to prep for things coming up in the fall, there are students that just really want to help out in the community, which is, it's been great working with them. They're just very inspiring. And so if you would like more information about that, I can put my information in the chat or just my email, so you can contact me. That's it.
Okay. Thanks Sabrina. A couple other folks online with us. And if you don't want to say anything, that's okay. Dorothea Lorenz, did you have any questions or comments? Okay. Um.
Perthie is muted, so you might want to-
Might want to help her unmute just in case.
I think she's muted on her side. Okay. Kwanu Wen? Hi, Kwan. All right, let's see. We've done Leah, Sabrina, Tommy How?
Hi, nothing to add. Just great to see everyone. I apologize, I dialed in a little bit late this evening, but good to be here, and I hope everyone had a fun and pleasant 4th of July.
Very good. Good to see you. Thanks to everyone who is here with us tonight. We really appreciate it. And if we have nothing else, we're going to go ahead and call the meeting to a close because it's a little after 8:00 now. And we still have some time to get things done. I see the note from Sabrina Bazo in chat about the virtual Taste of Miramesa and the, her contact info there. Pam, do you have that for our Facebook or newsletter or?
Yes, actually, I did write an article about the tutoring program that was in the June 15th Miramesa Living Edition. I don't think it reran in the July 1st one, but I can make sure it gets into the July 15th edition. And that leads me to ask, do we have a new Miramesa Town Council newsletter editor now? Because I know we had somebody who was interested. And any updates on that?
Yeah, we had one person earlier, right about the time of COVID, who, that has not materialized. We do have someone who has been an editor with Mesa College. She committed to do it and said she's going to be sending me a list of questions to get started. Probably things like what software, what do we need? And as soon as she gets back to me with the questions, we've had conversations, and she's ready to do it. So as soon as she gets back to me with her remaining questions, we'll go ahead and make the announcement of who it is. And we set a target of having a newsletter out in August.
In August. That sounds great. Do we have a board meeting this coming Monday night, a week from tonight?
Yes, we do.
So, okay, so we can talk more about that then. If she's available, maybe invite her.
That's what I'm thinking. Before jumping her into the full-blown Blue Jeans meeting, let her meet everyone next week and talk about the newsletter and her thoughts.
Good.
Okay. Again, thanks to everyone who is here. The meeting's recorded. It's going up on Facebook very shortly. And we'll see you again next month. Oh, we do have a blood drive going on, but-
Recording has stopped.
I haven't been, I haven't been doing any advertising on it because Miramesa has come through in a huge way. Every single one of the 80 appointments available are booked, including six for people donating double red cells. It's amazing. The San Diego Blood Bank is absolutely thrilled. They want to do it again. They've already asked me if we would want to work with them on a monthly basis. We're going to see how this Wednesday goes and how all the COVID changes go. But that may be an ongoing project from the town council is to keep those blood mobiles coming every month. So thanks to everyone in the community who signed up. You all have a wonderful evening. Take care.
All right.
Thank you. Good night.
Bye, everybody.
Bye, everybody.
Bye, thank you.